Welcome to the Byron Hills Board of Education meeting. It's March 20th, 2018. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
You found us there. We missed you last time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight's meeting is predominantly going to be, as we delve into the budget a little bit, this is going to be budget hearing two. Just for the records, I called the meeting to order at 7:20 and the board went right into executive session and we discussed item 3.1, which was a contract matter, individual employee; 3.2, committee matter, emergency response team; 3.3, contract matter, individual employees; 3.4, board of education matter succession planning; and 3.5, personnel matter, individual employee. At this time, are there any comments from the public on any matters that are not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Can I have, sorry, one thing. We're going to have one revision to the agenda. We added one exact item. It was 3.5, which was a personnel matter, individual employee. With that change, can I have a motion to approve our agenda for the evening? A second?
Second.
All in favor? And can I have a motion to adopt our consent agenda, personnel, special services, and business? So moved? In a second?
Second.
All in favor? And that brings us to our special report, which is budget hearing two. I'm officially opening budget hearing two. And tonight, we are going to hear from some of the expense areas from some of our academic areas, and technology and curriculum, special services, and fine arts, and music. And this is one of the budget hearings where the public is invited to make recommendations for additions, deletions, as well as the one we're having next week. We'll hear from some of our other program areas. And at that point, we'll also hear about our revenue. So I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent.
Great. And I will just do the formal introductions and then let them share their budgets with us. But we have Jill Boynton, who's the Director of Special Services and Health Services. We have, who will be going first? Dr. Taylor, Andrew Taylor, for Technology; Deepak Marwa, Director of Fine Arts; and then our Tim Coltenacker, Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. So we'll go through each of their budgets tonight with some explanation. And I think what you'll find is, what we try to do is very similar to what the first principals' meeting was like, in which you're looking at how are these expenditures really meeting the goals, the K-12 district goals that we have now. So we can get started. Jim, I don't think you need to do any introductions, so we can begin with programs for students with special needs. Jill.
Thanks. So the proposed budget supports special education programs and services, health services, psychological services, English as a new language services, transportation, and 504 accommodations for our students in the district. As of the October count, and we always go by the October head count, the October count for this school year, we had 335 students with special needs. We had 19 students placed out of district. We had 44 students that were considered preschoolers with disabilities, and 12 students that were considered students that received English as a new language services. If you look at a lot of the areas in the budget, we do try to keep our costs neutral and reduce where possible. We provide mandated services to students with special needs in the least restrictive environment. Students that are considered to be students with special needs, they must meet the eligibility criteria, and this is determined by the Committee on Special Education. And it is a team that's comprised of our staff members, related services, staff, and the parents that are part of the team. Here in New York State, New York State does exceed the federal regulations quite often. They have about, at least about 100 other areas above the federal regulations. And we do obviously meet all those requirements, but it is extensive here in our state. We do provide programs for our students. We have students that are placed in out-of-district programs based on the Committee on Special Education, so we have to provide for their tuition, their transportation, and their related services. That's all composed in the programs that some of those students might need in out-of-district placements. If you look at the chart for the proposed budget, under the salaries, there are, there's a 5.1 percent increase there. That is comprised of teachers with a step increases in salary for our teachers. If you go to the contractual and other, there is an 11.2 percent increase in that line, and that really is due to our students that are recommended for out-of-district programs, the related services around those, but it really is the cost of the program. Some of the students might require a program that has no more than six students in the classroom, or no more than eight students in the classroom. Some of the students that are recommended for out-of-district programs might be classified with an emotional disability. They require therapeutic intervention and supports throughout the day. Sometimes their curriculum needs to move at a slower pace. They might have one-to-one aides that also increase the cost for those students. So there are a number of reasons, but the 11.2 percent increase is due to the programs for the students in those contractual places. We did have a slight decrease in our BOSI services of 7.8 percent. And also, it was related to students and programs. The number of students that were recommended for BOSI's programs went down a little bit. And our materials and supplies line increased a little bit. It was $550 increase, which is 1.4 percent. We do have, in the district, we don't have it at Coleman this year, we didn't have a cohort of students, but in our district, we do have an ungraded special class program. We have it at Wampus Elementary School, we have it at the middle school, and we also have it at the high school. So the increase for the supplies in one of the areas at the high school, I know Chris Walsh had, we spoke, but we added a supply line for our class at the high school. That particular program is ungraded, and students work on employability skills, unique job skills. I know recently, we had sent over some information from contracting with JCCA, which is an outside agency that offers job coaches to our students. So the students in that program will work on their employability skills in the building, and eventually it'll go out into the community. So one of the things that we did in their classroom, there's a build-out with a sink, stove, so there's a kitchen area, so they do need supplies and materials for that particular program. So that's why we have a little bit of an piece there in our materials and supplies district-wide. We do have a few students this year that would be graduating from the out-of-district programs. However, since about October, November, we have had about five students that have been really struggling a lot this year, and we're looking at out-of-district placements for them coming up. Some of them actually have just been placed recently. So the projection, even though we have 19 now, we have two exiting that'll leave us with 17 out-of-district place students, but we have five that we're looking at to place. So that brings us back up to 22.
So is that what's in that budget line, the tuition other schools?
Yes, yes.
And do you always attempt to try and place them with one of the programs within the consortium before going out?
Yes. So we do have schools that are in the Sound Shore Consortium, and they do have programs for students with special needs. We try to go within the consortium first because we haven't agreed upon lower rate, which is lower than the New York State rate, tuition rate, NTR. So we do that, and then we expand out. Sometimes those programs in those local school districts, they would not be able to meet our students' needs. So sometimes we do look outside. We look at Clearview, maybe Summit, we look at other schools that are called New York State Private Approved. But in addition to the tuition for those programs, we also have to provide the transportation to our students.
If, I guess if you look at the students that we need to send out of district, is there any rationale from a cost perspective, and also from trying to keep them in the community to extent possible, to create programs here for certain types of disabilities? Or are the things that we're sending students out for so diffuse that it just doesn't make sense from a scale perspective to do it here?
Right. So the second part of your question is correct. We do, we look at our cohorts of students, we look at the disabilities, classifications that the students have, their ages. Like, we might have one or two students in one building, but they range like over three grade levels, so it's hard to put a program together. What I spoke about before, the ungraded programs that we have, we do have students that come to us and pay tuition for the ungraded programs that we developed here at Wampus Middle School and my school. But some of the students that are placed out of district have some intensive needs, either emotional needs, some communication needs. So it really is that there's like a student here or there, and there's not enough for us as a district to say, okay, we're going to take our Byron Hill students that we placed to X school, and we're going to develop a program for them. If we could do that, we would do that.
And I guess in the time that you've been with us, which is...
Three years.
Three years, alright, gosh. So I guess, do you see, because this, I mean, the percentage increase of the budget is obviously much higher than our overall budget, and tends to be. And a lot of it, to your point, is dictated by state rules and regulations, too. But do you see this as just a constant trend in terms of the number of students as a percentage of the overall student body? Is it that more students need to be placed outside because just the needs are changing? Or is it just almost like random, like every year is just going to be slightly different in terms of, oh, we get some years it's going to be up, some years it's going to be down? How much of it is a trend versus how much of it is just like year-to-year volatility in terms of the budget?
So I think it's, it could be a little bit of both, but if we went back to the 15, 16 school year, we had 333 students that were classified through the CSE. We had 52 preschoolers, and we had 21 students placed out of district. In the 16, 17 school year, we had 338 students classified through the CSE. 32, so 20 less were classified as preschoolers with disabilities, and we had 17 students placed out of district. And 17, 18, we have 335 students, this is based on like that October, 44 students that were classified as preschoolers with disabilities. And like I said, when we started the school year, we had 19 students placed out of district. But I could take those 19 students that were placed out of district this year, and let's say three or four of them, or two of them, or one student could increase the cost by an extra $85,000 or $100,000, depending on that student's needs. We could have like 12 students one year and maybe have the cost be higher than it was for, probably not, but it could be a little bit higher than the cost for 17 students. So it really does depend on the individual student's needs and the programs that can provide their needs and accept them. So you have a lot of factors. So you might have three programs that accept the student. We look to go to the program that's closest to their home or to our district. The student and the parents go usually for intakes. They have to feel also comfortable with the program. So there are a lot of factors that we take into consideration when the committee does make the final decision.
So, I'm sorry, just, you know, questions. So now that, you know, so much early intervention and a lot of great programs that we have for the students in the younger grades, are you noticing any trends as they, the kids that stay in our district from the time they enter up until the high school? Is, it's not lightening up at all in the high school, is it, as far as the number of students classified?
I think we're still seeing, like, I think our numbers of students that are classified is staying fairly even. We're not seeing big spikes in numbers. We do provide a lot of early intervention, as you said. We do have a lot of support services that are like called building level supports where the students aren't even classified with a disability. Because we started the Integrated CoTaught program a few years ago, we're seeing that socially our students are doing really well. They're participating in a lot of activities with their peers. They're doing really well as they move through, you know, with the curriculum. So we're not seeing spikes in students overall, or where all of a sudden there are a lot of students that are being classified. Our numbers do run a little bit high. We do have more students that have 504 accommodation plans. We look for testing accommodations for our students, parents do. But I think overall, we don't have any big spikes. What we do see is a trend, and we've spoken about this at consortium meetings with our neighboring districts. A lot of the directors are reporting, and we're reporting that, we do see an increase in students that have a level of anxiety, students that tend to be a little bit more school phobic. You know, there are a lot of demands placed on our students, and sometimes they really have difficulty with that. So we are seeing more students that present that way.
Do any of our students that we send out of district ever return to our district?
Um, we do have, yes, we do have students that have been successful in an out-of-district placement, and when we are hearing that they're successful, their parents are obviously part of that program, you know, having conversations with them, hearing from the staff, and then the Committee on Special Education would come to the table and make that recommendation that the student can come to a less restrictive program. So we have had students in our district that have come back, and we really ensure that they're going to be successful when they do come back. And we provide whatever supports that they need in place for that step.
And their services are reevaluated every year, and they're retested every couple of years.
Correct.
So, you know, there's an opportunity to change what's appropriate for the child every year.
It's always the goal, if we can, to bring them back to the home, but we have to be able to meet their needs. I think what's important, too, is that we have programs that exist to try also to help students stay in the program, like the flexible support program at the high school, you know, as an effort to say, can we create an alternate environment that we're really supporting kids through their processes?
I guess, given our declining enrollment, and given the fact that we do have some initiatives that have been very successful for our own students, and I know from time to time we brought in students from other districts, is there a way to be more aggressive on the recruiting end, to find more students to fill the seats in the programs where we do have expertise?
For tuition base.
For tuition, to increase our tuition base, to try to offset some of the increase in the budget?
Yep. So we also do that at the consortium meetings. As directors, we share the programs and the capacity in each of the programs at a certain time. We do receive a lot of packets from other programs throughout the school year. As I said, we do have some districts that have students that come and pay tuition, and we also put that out there and say, look, our program up to eight students, we have six, you know, seats that are filled right now, we have two openings. So we do that frequently, as other districts do, too.
The co-teaching model, we've seen it in action in the middle school. Is it also used in the high school?
Yes. So this year, we did start the Integrated CoTaught in ninth grade in English, but in previous years, they did have the CoTaught for Earth Science for ninth graders and Global. So we did have it. We wanted to refine it and have Dr. Marilyn Friend come in and help us with the professional development in the high school this year. So we rolled that out last January, and then slowly did it through the school year, or as the school year progressed. Next year, we're adding 10th grade English CoTaught, and we currently have and have had CoTaught in Biology, and as I said, like Global, too. So we've had it in little bits and pieces at the high school, so we really wanted to refine it and have everyone be on the same page and use the same terms. And we wanted to really make sure that our teams were trained and had gone through the same training as the teachers in the middle school at Wampus and at Coleman have had, so...
And is it dependent on what the student body needs?
Yes.
Or is it, okay, so that will evolve depending on...
Yes. And really how we look at it when we develop the programs, and in particular Integrated CoTaught, you know, there's a little misnomer out there that because we have it, then that's what the students should get, or they should, and it really isn't. It's really based on the student's needs. If the students in the Integrated CoTaught program, if you look at that, then that special education teacher, that's team teaching with a Janet teacher, they should be providing specially-designed instruction to those special education students in that class. They should be doing something different than what the class is receiving as a whole. So because we have it, it doesn't mean that they automatically get it. It has to be based on the recommendations of the committee, and it's based on the student's needs. What we do provide the continuing services in our district, too.
When the faculty is allocated from a budget perspective, in the classrooms where you have two teachers, would this special needs teacher, certified specialty teacher be in this budget, and then the other teacher in the classroom would be in the other part of the budget?
Yes, that's correct.
I would imagine that it's much more complicated to do the co-teach model in a high school environment than the lower schools, because you've got different kids coming in every period.
Yes, it's, you look at what the students' needs are, and then the schedule needs to be built like around that. And you're right, on the secondary level, it really, we look at the academic subject area that the students might require CoTaught. You may have someone that's really strong in math, so they wouldn't require any special services at all in math, but they might be weak in English, you know, the English language arts area, so they might need CoTaught there, and then in social studies. So it goes by what their needs are, and then by the scheduling.
But the specialty teacher's not moving with the kids, they're staying...
They're not, we have different specialty teachers for subject matters, too, subject areas.
But they've got different kids rotating in every hour, so...
But only if they needed a different class of listeners.
Right, they only do one section of it.
Right.
It's not like it's happening all day long in every Earth Science or Biology class.
So it's possible it's not a full-time teaching position, it could be a point-whatever, depending on...
Okay. Yep. And the teachers are, you know, some of them are doing some CoTaught, some resource room, you know, it's a combination of some special class.
They have a schedule that's different.
I think what's important is that our, you know, we thought with this program that our children would thrive, and they are. They're in an environment with their peers, they have the extra support and they're thriving.
I think the one thing I'd like to add is, number one, it's been great to see the development in the program, and, you know, very thrilled with that. And I think that, the one quick question, the unanticipated, which I know you have, the number has to go in because you don't know, it almost ties out to the increase, which is just kind of an interesting thing, right? Just in the extent that, you know, it's hard to know, right? So that's, so, has that been typical, though, that you have four or five slots in unanticipated for that projected growth, maybe?
Yes. So to answer your question, since I came, over the last three years, we always had, you know, a number of unanticipated slots. Sometimes when you're looking and hearing and you're meeting and seeing that, wow, we've got like three or four that are going to take those unanticipated, and what are the number of graduates for those out of districts? So that's where it starts to get a little tricky, because you want to, you want to make sure, we have to meet our students' needs, and I want to make sure that...
That you budgeted for it.
Jill, as our enrollment drops, is it, do you experience that the ratio of special remains the same?
Yeah. I mean, even with our enrollment going down, I would expect that our numbers would, the percentage would stay pretty much stable, yes.
The last couple of years it went up.
It's increasing a little bit, right?
It's gone up.
335.
We're really working hard to look at our students and to really see, like, we've really been focusing a lot on working with our departments in all four buildings. I meet with the school psychologist monthly. If we can declassify a student, you know, we're going to come to the table and do that. So we really work hard to do that, because students don't, you know, even though maybe they needed the program and services when they were younger, or, you know, for several years when they were in, like, maybe Coleman, Wampus, it doesn't mean that they meet the eligibility criteria. As you said, they're tested every three years, our students are tested every three years. And if they don't meet the criteria to continue to be eligible, we recommend that they be declassified.
I'm glad to hear you say that. That's always been to me a touchstone of way Byron Hills is operated, and I would hate to deviate from that.
Yep. So...
I have to say that, I mean, I can speak from personal experience, the team is very good about that, and sometimes it's, sometimes it's hard for the parents to get to the point where they're willing to let go, and the team's really good about working with the parents to say, hey, you know, it's time, your kid's ready.
Yeah.
And there has to be a step down to that ready. It's not, you know, at the end of the year, this is what we're doing.
Kind of a phase down. But I think that energy around giving our students that need the support as much as they need it with the ultimate goal of transitioning out and, you know, trying to be penny-wise, pound-foolish, it's not going to work either. So, it's great, thank you.
If within those three years, teachers come to you and say this person's made leaps and bounds, do you reevaluate them, or you still wait for the third year to come?
You don't have to wait for the third year. Parents and/or school staff can ask for a request of review anytime during the school year. We can have one, or we can have 100 meetings during the school year.
It's the full battery of testing, that's done every three years, but the team needs every year to decide what the plan is for the next year.
Jill, just one other question that I have. Has there been any changes in Albany as far as what was mandated? Any changes at all on boosting that up?
Not for the eligibility criteria. They have, there, some changes have come down with the requirements for diploma options for students. And then what's, you know, what's required around that. The safety net loosened up a little bit. Superintendents have the option to review a portfolio for students for graduation requirements. So there were some changes to the requirements for diploma options for students.
Did any, nobody affect budgets, or...
No, nothing. And a few years ago, they did make some changes for the Committees on Special Education that we didn't always have to have a parent member present for initial meetings and for all the preschool meetings, but there's, it really hasn't been anything that would help us in the budget arena.
But Robin, that is, that is an issue that the New York State School Boards, as well as the New York Council of Special Education Administrators continue to lobby for. As Jill said, New York State has far more mandates than IDEA, and we're not getting back the funding. So we're not giving up on that.
And actually, it's a good point to raise, because in the current environment, I wouldn't say there's a lot of appetite to reduce state mandates, but I think there's a little bit more receptivity, at least in the legislature, to do so because of the issues that the states facing generally, and the property taxes. So if there are mandates that we just think don't make sense and don't serve kids well, but we're forced to do it because that's the state law, like, this is a good time to, through our advocacy efforts, both through the Super Tennis Association, through the School Board Association, to try to put some pressure on our legislatures to force changes, because there just hasn't been a lot of mandate relief. But really and truly, it's the one place where there should be some significant movement over the next couple of years.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we will move on to Dr. Andrew Taylor.
So the technology budget can be put into four general categories. Technology meaning infrastructure or hardware that we purchase for the district. Resources, looking at applications and content. Training, looking at our professional development. And then data, looking at our benchmark assessment systems, data systems that we use. And then technology department, our goal is to really provide data and technology in a way that is seamlessly integrated into the teaching and learning for students. If we go to the next slide, we can actually just look at how that breaks down in the budget. So when I talk about technology staffing, that includes the, build the technology consultants, computer aides, technology staff, data specialist, director of technology, myself. Technology staff includes, we have in the BOSI's line, BOSI staff as well as our own technology staff that supports teachers. Hardware, we're looking at server closet equipment, software for the buildings, and our biggest hardware purchases, which is our IPA, our installment purchase agreement. Under professional development, that is both contractual professional development, consultants we have come in, and then district-developed professional development. And maintenance and supplies, that's looking at the repairs and supplies, materials we use to repair the equipment throughout the year. BOSI's is our largest line item, and that's looking at our network support, internet bandwidth filtering, telecommunications, data warehousing, and a variety of other services that they provide for us. Under technology, we have, we have five big focus areas that we're looking at right now in the area of technology. One is looking at technology applications and resources. Because we've gone one-to-one, the number of applications that we're using as a district has increased over the last couple of years. And so we've looked at some software that we have that monitors our software and use throughout the district. GoGuardian, CatchOn, CloudLock, which does a couple of things for us. Helps us monitor whether or not the software we're purchasing is being used effectively and how often, but also looks at data security on those devices, those software as well, to make sure that we're not sharing, using third-party applications that might be sharing inappropriate data. Maintaining a strong infrastructure, our infrastructure was put in five years ago now, so it's time to start thinking about replenishing our infrastructure and our closets. So we're looking at, this year, starting that process, this summer of upgrading some of our closets, and then in the following year, we'll be upgrading, grading our switches and access points throughout the district.
Isn't it just done?
Five years.
Five years ago.
Robin, I was thinking exactly the same.
What I was thinking, in the state of advanced technology, we're still talking about something being housed in a closet and having to be, you know, redone. It's so interesting with this whole cloud world.
Technology and data use, we're looking at data dashboard for the district, and how that might be able to be used through RTI, through a variety of different data meetings that we house throughout the district. So we're investigating this this year, and I think we've come to one that we're looking at piloting for next year, as well as do providing professional development around data and technology. This year, we're being, we're moving to managed IT. The state, this past year, the Lower Hudson Rick, which is our southern western district BOSI's, which handles most of our technology support services, a few years ago, started a process of movement from collaborative support to managed support. What that means is we can no longer provide, they can no longer provide services in full 1.0 FTEs to us, so they have to break the services up into smaller segments of no more than a .6 FTE, and they have to provide services in a different way. So they've created what they call vertical teams to support our higher-level needs. And the vertical teams are specialists that are housed at the Lower Hudson Information, Regional Information Center. So when we have specific needs, we can go to this team of people that'll support that higher-level need. Reducing our need for support and higher-level support needs inside the district, so that when we're purchasing support from them, it's actually more of our basic-level supports. This year, we're going through a process of transitioning to that, which is requiring us to convert a bunch of services inside the district. For example, our devices, we're moving from Windows 7 to Windows 10, 32-bit to 64-bit machines, things that are going to increase our performance inside the district, but are going to be some switches, from Novell to eDirectory, which is a Microsoft service, going from Novell to eDirectory, which is a Microsoft service, going from one domain to two domains. We're cleaning our system up as part of this process. We're taking care of some, some network issues that I think are going to actually make us stronger in the long run, but this year is going to be some, some movement we're going to have to make over the course of the summer as part of going from collaborative to managed And making sure that we're on a, on a tight replenishment schedule. We're at a point where we're one-to-one, so we want to make sure that we continue to support that initiative. In order to do that, we need to make sure that we have a replenishment schedule that replenishes the technology on a regular basis so that we're not one-to-one, but with all technology that isn't really up to the needs we have, which, which is looking at not only just the, the end devices like the Chromebooks, but looking at our closets as we replace things. We've went, when I, when I first started, we were at 50 megabytes of internet. This year, we're at one gig. Next year, we're going to be going to 1.5 gig to support the, the need of the district and what the, the usage that we have inside the district.
Is the, the managed IT, is that level one support or the end users is still coming to, they're still coming internally for level one?
So we'll still have level one support inside the district, but they will, calls will, they will have a help desk that will help route the calls to the appropriate support inside the district. And if it's, and if it's like a, a voice call for something's wrong with a telephone or telecommunications, they have support inside the, the BOSI's that can handle that remotely and they'll, they'll look at that first before it gets put onto local support. So if you look at the budget, a couple of the increases that we have right now, we have travel and conferences, it records, it looks like a large increase, but it's, it only represents $2,000 in that budget line and that's for professional development to help send some of our trainers to provide professional development for them. Computer purchasing through the BOSI's, that, that is our, our IPA. Our, our IPA is our largest purchase throughout the year of technology and that's really where we do most of our replenishment, network support. That's an increase this year because of the, we were getting on that, on that four-year plan. I think that should level out next year because we're actually going to be at a point where we're, we're doing the same amount of an IPA every year. Now, we've been in the last three years looking at about a 450 to 500,000 IPA and I think that next year, we're going to level out that out so that that should pretty much level next year and we'll be doing that same IPA and that should take care of our needs as a district to get on a replenishment cycle. The computer support through BOSI's, a 4.23% increase there. That is to represent some of the changes that we're making in moving to managed IT. Now, the, the Regional Information Center has actually said that our, our budget should go down about 2% next year as a result of moving to there, but there are some costs associated with moving to, to the managed IT. But next year, they're, they're estimating that it should go down about 2%, our overall BOSI's line. And computer software, we did increase that this year because of the, just increased need. We actually are having more and more requests from teachers and, and, which are good things. They, they want to use the technology more and more and more, but that requires software. When I say software, it's really, we don't, we have almost no software that we purchased that are traditional discs that are installed someplace. It's all cloud-based applications.
It's on floppy disks, ain't it?
Yeah, no floppy disks. We don't even use Thunder drives anymore, it's all in the cloud.
And do we leverage pricing with BOSI's, as part of BOSI's consortium when we're, when we're buying software or is that all leveraged?
We are, and part of that is in the support services in the BOSI's line as well. I'm trying to move a few of our applications when they support that applications. BOSI's doesn't support all applications, they have to have a service where they need at least three districts that are participating, that are using the application, and then they have to have expertise to help support it in-house. So when appropriate, I do try to move the software into the BOSI's line so that we can get aid on it.
So it's here so we can get aid on it, is that instead of putting it in program or is this from program? Like, it's not part of the, the teaching program, that line of the software?
There's, there's, the software is in two places in this budget. There's a software line which we purchase software in-house from and that's software that's not supported by the local BOSI's. Then there are some software titles that are inside of computer support BOSI's, the 2630.490 line. There are some software titles that are in there. Those are top titles that are used by multiple districts throughout the region and the, and the BOSI's has trainers that can support that.
So given that we have a couple million dollars flowing like through BOSI's, when you look at the overall relationship and the service that you get and the quality and then the, hopefully the benefits of consortium buying and then the aidability from the state, all the different factors, do you feel like you're getting good value compared to what you can get elsewhere?
Like any large service provider, I think there's things that they do really, really well and there's things that they could do better, but I, I am on the advisory team for the region, so that's made up of, of about 15 people for around 15 to 20 people around the district, so I am able to kind of weigh in a little bit there and tell them what I think that they do good and what they could do better. But overall.
Which you have a right to do, given the two million dollars.
Exactly.
Do they listen to you?
They do, there are some things that, that, yes, there's been a couple times where Tim's gotten some calls from the district superintendent because I've made some ways, places, but yes.
We like waves.
It's the only conference call now, let's do it.
That's it, good for you.
But there are, they, they do a lot of things really well, I have to say. And I am, there's some parts of managed IT I'm excited about. I do think the vertical teams could be great. I'm a little bit nervous that they might not have the expertise to support the number of people that are coming on to that, that right now, so we're going to have to watch that over the course of the year and see if that, they're going to be able to really give us the support that we're paying for because it's not, it's not a cheap service.
Since you're on that committee, are you able to, if, let's say, two schools want to do something or one of those two schools, are you able to find a third school generally?
Yeah, there's been a few different products that, that we've brought on this year that I knew that other district from our regional technology directors meeting we're using that, that we got together and recommended that they, that they use them. It's, it's hard with an entity like the Lower Hudson Rick though, there, there's a lot of political things happening inside there within like, is, what, what area of, of the organization does this fall in? So sometimes it takes a long time to get things processed through them. For example, Go Guardian is a filtering system, but we don't really use it, we use it as a filtering system, but we use it much more than that. It's an instructional system for us because we use it to monitor what students are doing, monitor things. Where does that fall? Does that fall in instructional support, model schools, or does that fall into web filtering, which is network support? So it takes a little bit of negotiating where it's going to fall. From my perspective, I don't care where it falls, you can follow, you can put it wherever you want, I just want it to be supported through your organization and to, to be able to reach some of the benefits of having it go through you.
So generally, they can fit our needs?
Generally, but I have to say that we have $140,000 worth of software that we purchased that they don't support.
So when you, when you're purchasing something that's not supported by BOSI's, are you making a one-time purchase or are you signing up with a service, with like a SaaS service provider?
We always pilot something before we purchase it. So, and most of the time, I can get the provider to give it to us for a short time to pilot it for three or four months, or we purchase it for a year for a small group of teachers inside the district before we end up purchasing it for a larger number, a grade level. But once we purchase it, it's usually a subscription service that we purchase every year. That's why I want to monitor those a little bit more. We, we do monitor them, but I wanted software that would actually track how many logins we have, how many incidents that we're having, so that we can actually really get good data to make decisions on. Is it, do we really need 100 licenses of that or is 50 more appropriate for it? And we're getting to a point where we need to have that tracking system.
Speak a little bit more about what a tracking system like that actually does and what it actually tracks in mind, just spanning on that a little bit.
So, it tracks the, the number of logins to the system that we have so that we can see how many times it's been logged in, how, and how, how long the login was, so that we can see, is this something that they, that they go too often, they go too, you know, rarely, is it, how often, what grade levels is it being used at? Depending on the system, I can say, well, third grade is using this a lot, but fourth grade isn't so much, so maybe I need to get a grade level of it, or I need to do professional development in fourth grade because it's something that's really good and I need to make sure that they're using it. So it's not all of like, say, it's not a really gotcha sort of thing, it's more of a thing that if we need to focus on professional development because we think that the software really has value and we wouldn't have purchased it if we didn't think that, then we need to provide our professional development or we need to go to the people that are, that are not using it and say, why might you not be using it? Is there a reason? And sometimes there is a good reason and they say, well, we have this other software that is free or this other software that fits our need better.
We used to do that through surveying teachers and self-reporting, so the data wasn't really accurate. So we'd sort of draw an conclusion and then as we made decisions, people would say, wait, I use it and we were finding that frustrating. So this is a great tool that gives us real data.
And then how would you, I mean, this is, it's, it's difficult to do, but is, are there any analytics being done on the return on the investment? Like, how, okay, so they're, they're using the software, how is it actually benefiting them? Like, what's, what's the?
Is there a progress monitor?
Right, is there, is it actually building these skills? Are these skills actually being used in the classroom or are they being used in?
Yeah, so there's two different things that we look at. We look at return on investment for some software that, that, for example, if it's a management-type software, one of the things we've been looking at is like some software that manages paperwork. So we can look at return on investment, does it reduce our time, does it reduce our thing and look at pure return on investment. For instructional software, we tend to look at more value of investment, so we look at is there a clear value that we can determine based on the use of this? And value on investment is, is a little bit better in this regard, so we can say, what is the value of having this in our, inside of our system? There's some things that we can see clearly, iExcel is a great example of that. iExcel has clear value inside of our system because we're seeing that kids want to be on it, teachers are using it, it has a great benchmark and an assessment system that, that we can use to sort of progress monitor kids and to assess where kids are, what their needs are. So, and, and other products, we, we, we have some questions about that. That's why being able to monitor it and then get feedback, where we can specifically target feedback is a little bit easier for us than just saying, do you like this on a survey, like, like Tim was saying, is, what's your, what's the value of this from your perspective? That's not really that valuable for us, where I can say that no, no fourth grade teachers are using it and what, why isn't this valuable to you?
Understanding that lots of large organizations that spend hundreds of millions of dollars on this have issues, but do you feel like from a data security standpoint, you know, we've made the investments that you think are important and we do the best we can to protect the integrity of our data, the student data and other data, boy data?
Yeah, we are looking into right now, having some penetration testing done and some other external testing done right now. The Regional Information Center does handle some of that for us, but I would like to have an independent person do it, so possibly over the course of summer or next year, having someone come and do some outside penetration testing might be good for our district to see what our vulnerabilities are. But we, we try to be proactive on, on some of the systems that we have in place to be able to see what data is being used. For example, third-party applications are one thing. I don't want to shut our network down so teachers can't install third-party applications because then nothing gets used. If, the more you restrict things, the, the, the less the, then people just abandon it and say it's too hard to use in general. So we allow third-party applications, but we have something called Cloud Lock, which monitors the third-party applications that are being installed and they have, Cisco has evaluated all of them and tells you what critical data is being, being shared by them so that we can go in and monitor them and shut down ones that are being, that are, that are sharing critical information. It also monitors documents that are being shared in the Google Drive as well, so it monitors, so it makes sure no shared data, like something that says IEP is being shared outside of our domain. So it does, it does monitor it so that we can look at it after the fact. One of the things that we've been working to put in, but we haven't gotten yet, we're, hopefully we'll have in, by the end of the year, is a system that will, if someone shares something or installs a third-party app that has critical data that might be shared, they'll instantly get an email to say, are you sure you should, you wanted to install that application or are you sure that you wanted to do that? Here's our AUP, you might want to read it to make sure that it is because it might have critical information that's being spelled, so that we use it as a learning opportunity as, as well as a monitoring device.
I think just adding to that on the cybersecurity where we've got terrorism, you know, in our schools in a, in a physical way and cyber attacks, you can only see that, you know, kind of cascading as a real, you know, fear and concern, so I think whatever we need to spend and, you know, focus on that, the penetration test, I was, I was going to be one of my questions just because it's, you know, it's pervasive right now, so that's really important.
We do have two systems that helps to sort of monitor email for possible students that might have, have, might have problems that they're dealing with or, or might be doing things that are inappropriate and sharing that through, through their Google Docs or email. And all it basically does is notify us that there, there might be some, some suicide tendency or something that they're doing that might be doing that. So we have a couple of systems that do monitor for specifically explicit material and.
Keywords.
Keywords that might be self-violence, might be related to violence or self-violence or self-harm.
Do we have mandated data privacy training that staff has to do?
Well, the AUP is, we do every year through our.
And policy, you know, what can be shared of student information?
Yeah, every year they have to, there's an online training that they go through that where they read the AUP and then there's some questions that the answerer is related to it.
So the language that we had put in place, or you had put in place for third-party vendors as for sharing student data, that's still relevant and timely and applicable?
It is. The, the only one that becomes hard for us is the third-party Google applications because it's either that we allow, we allow them to, we, we allow them, allow users to install them and then we monitor them or we have to shut them all down. There's no in-between in that that we can offer. So we opt to allow them to install and then it's the check but verify, you know?
So they don't?
Trust but verify.
So then they don't, they've signed, they've signed it, so is it, we used to make all of our third-party vendors sign?
We have, anything that we purchase, anything that we purchase as a school district, they, they sign a data privacy act statement and we get their, we, we make sure that their policy aligns with the New York State data policy. And then their, that vendor goes on a list that gets put on our website once a year that we update and says that all of the, all of the vendors that we, we purchase stuff are from. We don't necessarily do that with every third-party application, but we do monitor them.
Andrew, thank you, I think you hit on.
That was a great report.
Cyber safety and remaining cutting-edge and updating our current systems and also advocating for our district in the technology.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And now.
Now.
I have to follow that.
Why doesn't it have?
How about a song and dance?
Yeah. Actually, the guy in person would have warmed up.
Where the, where the wind comes sweeping down the plane.
That's right.
And the waving wheat.
Well, I'm excited to share some of the highlights that we've been able to achieve with our students this year from the budget that the board, that you have supported and that the community has supported. But before we go through that, I'd like to just go through a couple of the changes. The budget itself is very similar to that of this school year. It reflects a number of decreases and increases due to the contractual step, increases of the contract. And the largest increase you'll see will be the music contractual budget, which I'll explain in a bit. In order to identify some of the decreased costs, I worked with building principals and found decreases for conferences, repairs and supplies in the art department. And in music, we're able to decrease costs in repair supplies and in sheet music. You'll notice that the budget for contracted services has increased. That's due to a program that we started at HCC this year that started from a generous grant from the BHEF in order to have the resident artists, two resident artists come to HCC to work with the choral students and with our orchestral students. They've come to HCC two to three times a week and has worked with small groups of students in order to give them more attention on the needs. They'll take the higher-level students some days and work with them on the way to get them further along and work with students that need to have a lot more time to master their instrument or vocal progress. So this year, we've, so this will, since the BHEF helped us to incubate that last year, this year we'll be taking it into our contractual music budget. But there was a way that we did this that I think worked out really well for us. Because we use the arts and education program to pay these resident artists, we were able to recoup some of that in state aid, which we're, which I'll explain in a second. This year, I also asked Dr. Kaltenekar if I could oversee some of the arts and education budget, since I had my finger on all the consultants that we hired for all the shows at HCC at Wampus and the three shows that we do at the high schools. So to date, we, I think, from all the spending that we've done to date, we've already contracted enough programs and consultants to receive approximately 35,000 in state aid next year, which more than covers the increase for.
That's critical.
And one of the last points I'd like to make in, in regards to changes in the budget is in order to support programs that might span across buildings K through 12 in both departments, I've created a district budget code for both contracted services and travel slash conference. Instead of the, what was existing before, were individual contracted, sorry, individual contracted services and travel conferences budgets for each building. And I think in doing that, I can actually look at that and say, I'd like to send a team across so one person from each building can go to attend a conference or a workshop to do PD that will span across K-12 instead of individual teachers doing that. Some highlights that I'd like to share with you is that in our art program at the high school, we were able to introduce this year metal smithing and jewelry design as a new course, which is steam-related and your book. course, which is STEAM-related, and your book production, which will help produce the art yearbook that happens every year. We've realigned some of our film courses. So Film 1 is now called Movie Making and Media. Film 2 is now Intro to Film and Film Workshop is now called Digital Storytelling. The last two, Intro to Film and Digital Storytelling, are aligned with CUNY's ECE or Early College Experience Program. So students who take Intro to Film and Digital Storytelling can now opt to get credit from any SUNY school or CUNY school and some private colleges that also take that. So it's aligned, thank you, it's aligned our art programs. And now there's an end course in each one of the strands of the art program, which will give them college credit, most of which are AP and this one being Early College Education. And also in the art department, we've had students this year participate in the Stuart Weitzman Shoe Design Competition in two categories, socially-conscious shoe design and material innovation. And I was happy to learn that three out of the 10 finalists in this are from Byron Hills. And you have an opportunity next month...
Shoe design?
Shoe design, yes. And they've done some really wonderful things.
That says something, I'm not sure what though.
Three out of the 10 finalists.
It says something, I'm just not sure what it says.
That's my sister-in-law's daughter. What is it called? The Stuart Weitzman?
The Stuart Weitzman Shoe Competition.
Shoe Competition.
Tori Burke doesn't have one.
Sorry?
Tori Burke doesn't have one.
No, Tori Burke does not have one.
Maybe coming soon. It's in the winter area.
So some of these were displayed in the, sorry, in the Winter Arts Show and they were brilliant. So in April, they'll have an opportunity to meet Stuart. Actually, they've already had an opportunity to meet Stuart Weitzman and to pitch their ideas. Then they're going to have them in April come down to the city.
It's like a reality show.
Yeah, it really is. And they'll find out who won. And Stuart Weitzman will actually produce the shoe of the winter.
Oh, wow.
Maybe they'll get the show up on Bobcat TV.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's gonna be a red carpet.
We're really creating leaders.
An exhibition, a shoe exhibition.
I have a good idea.
It's impressive.
Really creative figures in the art department, which is...
And defining our priorities, which is really nice.
That's amazing.
Last week, we had one of our teachers from the high school, Amy Minasche, go to Pittsburgh in order to, she actually took one of the largest displays from her ceramics class and drove it out to Pittsburgh because she was afraid to have it shipped over. We had three of our students at the high school who were invited to have their work on display at the National Council on Education for the Ceramic Arts. So at their national conference, they were there and two out of the three students won awards for their...
Wow.
That's in addition to all the other things that they do as well. In music, we added the Resident Artist Program at HCC, which we will maintain for next year. The Studio Music Production and Composition II Class, which is now an extension of the electronic music class that we've also offered. And then another new class we're offering is called Investigating Music, which connects to what used to be our Music Media and Society course, but adds an extra component of having students connect to the actual art form in concert. So we would identify each year concerts that are going on in Westchester, New York City, and have students actually learn about that particular genre of music in context and then show them the way that it's performed.
But come on, what are you really doing?
Yeah, that's right. Just having a good time, that's it, right? One of the things that I'm particularly proud of is even though we are looking at declining enrollment, the music courses at the high school from, since the 2015-16 school year have gone up about 14%. So that's really...
Really?
Well, you know, the program that you did for the rising freshmen, right? You did for the paid parents, that was new, right?
Last year, we started just for music and this year we did it for music and art. And the art portion was a festival in Bobcat Hall.
So have those students selected their courses yet at the high school?
They're coming in this week and I started looking at them and they're strong members.
So that's what we're interested in to see, right?
But I'll say with all the competing courses out there, it's impressive that there's that kind of an increase. And you can just see there's so much visibility around a lot of these initiatives.
I'm sorry, I'm really wondering how you're going to do as the enrollment does start to drop a little bit. But Deepak, this really is terrific.
Thank you.
I mean, what we're doing and doing within the budgetary constraints we place you under, it's really, it's really a, probably some appropriate variety headline in Hollywood speak that you can come up with, but congratulations. It's really very good.
Yeah, because we've had the declining enrollment and you're on a trend.
But I love that we're giving every single student an opportunity somewhere to succeed and to, not just succeed, but really thrive in whatever, whatever they're at.
So what's the musical next year? Come on, come on with it.
All right, here we go. I actually wrote it down because I knew you'd ask. Open with Shakespeare's Twelfth Night, then we'll go to Shrek. We're meeting with Alice in Wonderland. Haven't decided the middle school yet.
I was thinking Carousel, but I...
Oh, I love it. It's on Broadway now.
I know, I saw it, it was terrific. That's a hard show though because it requires a lot of men dancing, which I don't know if you've...
We have men dancing. We have men dancing.
Well, I was thinking it was more dancing than Carousel than Oklahoma, actually.
That's true. They're all for it, I'm sure.
Think about Carousel.
I'll vote for a few dances. I'll do it if he dances.
I've done it. Congratulations. All these three reports were great.
Yeah, I just want to ask, with the increasing art and the increasing direction in engineering in the high school, are you working hand-to-hand?
We're starting to talk about ways that we could increase that. So these new courses in art and in music are starting to really dip into STEAM, especially with, and we're still increasing what we're doing within the courses. Like last year, we purchased a potter bot, which Amy Minasche is now using in the ceramics class and they can design using the software and then it extrudes all the, I mean, it's such a cool thing to watch. Extrudes it and then starts to build this thing right in front of your eyes. So we're starting to make that happen. I'm still kind of figuring out how this will work because as the teachers are getting more comfortable with STEAM, they also want to make sure that they're not saying that traditional forms of art are not as important as learning...
Jill, it's probably unfair to have you on the same table with Deepak in terms of, you know, it's just what he does, it's like crazy. But, you know, the arts for so many years here, I mean, I'm not talking about, Joy had a struggle and fight for the money and even before Joy came, the arts was almost underfunded here. And this is like a golden era we have. It really is, Deepak. This is, you're doing some great stuff with the kids and it's just easy, you know, it's easier for me to see it than I might be able to see what Jill's doing on a day-to-day basis because your, it's performances and it's programming and things that are visible to the community to an extent and, well, I'm just...
Period, covering everybody. Right, and it's capitalizing on what you said. I mean, our students participate and we have robotics for our, actually, our ungraded and special-class students participate in that at the high school. We have kids that are in chorus, choir, so...
That's great.
The opportunities that our kids have are just...
Oklahoma, it's just great.
It's awesome.
Well, you know, these are three great reports, really.
My daughter was telling me about one of the kids in your program that's doing a piano performance that was out of this world.
Thank you very much, Al.
Sure, sure.
Deepak, first, let me just say, just one thing about Deepak. Really, you've exceeded expectations, you know, as far as that department's concerned. I think just better control of the K-12 picture in not only programs but in budget. It was a multitude of different areas and you really consolidated that together. And I think you've pulled out incredible programs without increasing that budget. I mean, it's inconceivable that you can do that. And to look at current programs and change them to be more timely to what we're doing today, knowing that you can't spend the money and finding it and getting that state aid and everything else, I think is just amazing. And just always looking for opportunities for kids and opportunities for faculty, you know, whether you're doing it through the Google Plus program where he's keeping everybody connected in these buildings, in four buildings, and they're sharing their work, but just...
The teachers are doing arts newsletters and they're all in it, it's really incredible.
Just what you're doing overall, I appreciate it.
Even the marketing materials for Byron Hills in general, I mean, it's...
We haven't even talked about Bobcat TV, which is your whole other area. We'll get to.
The level is...
Jim will be able to tell you a little about the growth in Bobcat TV, but it's been fantastic this year.
I mean, I think we should just do it now. Do you mind? Bobcat TV, do you want to? There's so much that you have to write it down, but basically, we have now our, we have our Bosse's budget, I want to go through this first. And Bosse's budget covers our, this is less exciting right now, but it's our budget brochure and it is our calendar and all of our relationships with Bosse's regarding publications. I have to say that we have a new person who's working with us from Bosse's, who has just been doing an outstanding job on Facebook and really covering a lot of the events and Spectrum that's going to be coming out, looks really great and budget brochure as well. But Bobcat TV, when we look at what is the benefit, we've had our biggest viewership since Bobcat TV's inception. There are nearly 30,000 views in this school year alone. And, be proud, board meetings have over 120 views.
A year?
This year. That's an all-time high.
Principal's coffees are now being...
I'll stop going online for it.
I have to say, I love what the principal coffees are being...
Yes, it's...
Thank you.
It's so hard for working parents to say to you, you feel very attached.
Live streaming, we dabbled last year. Brian Melso and his student crew went full force this year. They had over 1,400 views for different particular athletic games. And they plan on live-streaming graduation this year, every grandparent's dream, if you can be there. And start up again with it in the fall. And they livestreamed the CNN anchor John Berman's address, along with some ceremonies early in the year to test out the equipment. And I love the inclusion of kids in that program. I mean, I'm looking at drone shots from a student right now for the calendar for next year. A student sent me video that he did, you know, all part of this work that's happening with Bobcat TV, a video that he did for the basketball team he sent to me today, us today. I mean, it's just outstanding.
Why is there a difference in these two slides between the one we have on salaries shows up 41.7% here and here it says zero? There's a variance on the variance.
I think the original one that I just sent out with the board box had two errors in it, subtraction. This is an updated slide.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Student quality, always raising the bar with quality of content. So they've been making sure content they produced is done more efficiently and effectively at Bobcat TV. And they really had to do that because they have to keep up with the amount of programming that we are asking them to do now for Bobcat TV, which is more than ever. New websites, Brian Melso's really designed and developed a new, more user-friendly website. Community can really easily search for content in that Bobcat TV. And as we said, the principal's coffees and now the guidance group discussions are also going to be broadcast for parents who can't make it to the guidance group discussions. So managing that in the salaries and other contracts, I mean, I get to share the joy, but Deepak has created it with Brian and Elise. So, thank you.
Oh, what a beautiful...
Tim?
All right. Mine, you've heard from me a lot, but I'll go through it. First, let me point out, when you look at my budget codes, you see a large increase for Bosse's services, 132%.
On every slide.
I think that caught our eye.
Let me assure you that that is not due to any new spending. It is Jim's good efficiency in catching some Bosse's expenses that were being allocated in other ways and we can bring that into some cusers, some existing cusers, and that way we'll get state aid back on it. So that is an efficiency in our expenditures that will be adable. But there's no new spending and my curriculum budget overall is a 0% increase, like a 0.8% increase or something. So it was minimal, tried hard to keep that low. So with that, let me give you an overview of some of the priorities this year that drive, that's driving my budget. First is our math, our changes to our math program, K-12. You know that we're doing a rollout of our investigations math program, K-5. We will be in year two next year, so have a three-year rollout. So that involves purchasing a lot of materials, curricular materials, hands-on materials as part of the teacher kits and student materials, as well as some online tools. So that's coming out of my new program budget and so that'll be continuing expenses for the next few years. Also, we've been engaged in extensive professional development for our middle school and high school math pathways for the accelerated program. We've heard a lot about that recently. And that is paying for professional development for teachers to do the curriculum work as well as the training for the instructional shift. So that's the focus in math recently. As you know, the state recently adopted new standards in science and we've been doing a lot of professional development over the past few years, more at the middle and high school, the next-generation science standards now than New York State standards. And we will be now looking at our K-5 program, particularly in K-2. We haven't done any work K-2 yet with science. So I'm anticipating some costs for new materials and training K-2 and eventually 3-5 for science materials. We're continuing our focus on literacy and our curriculum development in literacy, K-5, so paying for professional development and some anticipated materials as well. Now that we've appointed a new Wampus principal, I'll be working with Peggy to see what her assessment is of where we need to put some resources in terms of our curriculum at Wampus. I'm anticipating some work in literacy there, so I'm setting some money aside for that. And then also continuing to support our STEAM initiative. As you know, last year we, or for this year, we added four new high school courses in STEAM, including the Pathways Engineering, the Robotics Course, the AP Computer Science Principles as well. We're continuing to develop more STEAM courses, looking to support what Deepak may be creating in some of the work in the fine arts as well in STEAM and continuing to do work K-12 in the STEAM area. Also, we'll be entering year two of the Global Scholars Program at the high school. Enrollment is looking really good and I'll give you an enrollment update probably at the next board meeting to see, but the teachers are seeing a lot of interest in that course. So we have a three-year plan for that, so I'm putting money aside to, for both professional development for the instructors as well as any materials that we need for the Global Scholars Program.
I know that they had 80 students in the program this year and the last time we looked, there were 50 students who were signed up.
Yep, it's looking good.
50 students signed up for the second period, are you talking about? Okay. Some of those are seniors and they stay home.
Seniors, some juniors who couldn't fit in and are scheduled because of other priorities.
Freshmen can't take that class, correct?
Yes, for 10th, 11th and 12th. Freshmen don't really have that much time. Also, with technology training, also my budget supports, in collaboration with Andrew, support our extensive professional development in the summer. We do a lot of curriculum work and pay teachers to come in in the summer and do that work. It's all overseen by their administrators. And we also have our annual cyber camp, which is technology training in the summer. So a big portion of my budget goes to that summer professional development. And finally, looking at wellness, we continue to look at programs to support emotional wellness K-12 and continue to do training across the district in those areas. So those are the major curricular priorities going into next year. Now, I've talked about all of these and you've asked a lot of questions in the past. I silenced everyone, look at that. I was so thorough. I will say this, next board meeting, next week, Peggy and I will be doing a joint staff report around an update on our K-5 math program investigation. So we'll be giving you an update K-2 on how kindergarten and first grade's going this year with investigations and also looking at our rollout. We might have some suggestions for an adjustment to our rollout plan. So we're still developing that, but we'll be ready for you next meeting. Keep you hanging, that's a cliffhanger.
Tim, I think that there are no questions because you've had such a measured and precise rollout of all of these initiatives that everybody feels very comfortable with, especially Superintendent.
That much is certain.
No surprises except for the 932%.
That surprised me too. That wasn't the budget I submitted to him. Then I get this back from Susan actually saying, here's your new budget. What is this increase? Like, what's zero? The word's going to flip out.
I'm going to be fired.
We know you're going to make it good personally, Tim, so it's okay.
Tim, thank you very much.
It's really great, thanks, Tim.
You're welcome.
So that brings us to budget steps from here. Budget steps from here. So March 27th, we have budget here in three. Again, expenditures, we'll hear from operations and maintenance, transportation and athletics. And Jim will cover revenue at that time also. That's a big meeting and also the last time that the public has an opportunity to come and come and help on the budget. And that's it. And we have nobody in the public that hasn't worked on this budget, but I will ask, does anybody in the public have any comments on our budget? Hearing none. I want to open it back to the board. Is there any other questions on the stuff that we talked about now or other stuff that you feel doesn't maybe quite fit into what we're going to be talking about next week that you want to ask or mention?
I have one question. Jill, I think it was you who said, I'm not certain, about taking what you got from the foundation and integrating it into an ongoing budget item.
It was Deepak, yeah.
Was you again? Was you again?
It was just one that was...
Sorry, it was you again. Has this happened before or is this the first for you?
First for me here, but we used, in my previous district, we used to do similar things.
Okay. I mean, this is always something that we hear about where the foundation gives a terrific grant or whatever, and then that ultimately results in budget impact, which in many respects is good, or something I just like to track. That's what I think.
Well, in this case, there was no budget impact.
No, well, which is, which is even better. But the concept always was something that, over the years, has, requires some vigilance. And this is not a slight anywhere in the foundations, just a financial fact of why for the Board of Education.
Right, like, right, because we always said, does it have a future? It has on our budget.
That's why I would ask.
Well, technology is case in point, right? So many of those initiatives started.
Yeah.
It would probably be at a foundation.
Like whiteboards.
I've hired a different...
Smarter than them, I'm sure, Jill. Tim, how long will it take to get that money back, do you think, from the state? Or maybe Jim can?
Four, five years.
How long will it take for that 132%? How long will that take to get that money back?
Bosse's is aided the following year, so whatever we spend in '17, '18, we're aided in '18, '19. Whatever we spend in '18, '19, we're aided in '19, '20. Again, that's one of the reasons when we talked about the proposed cap on the Bosse's aid, we, you know, we'd like to see that go away because we don't want to have our aid capped at a particular level. Whatever we spend, we want to receive the full Bosse's aid on there.
And then I have a question for Jill, because I heard it from Deepak. Deepak was able to go to the state and get some money. Are there any ways, since, when I was looking through the budget, it looks to me like we spend two and a half to one ratio with a special needs versus a general education student? Are there, is there any state aid that we're, maybe, we're not...
Yes, we have. It's called the system for tracking and accountability of children. So we do receive state aid for the students that are considered either high cost or placed in out-of-district programs. And we, each district has a threshold, so if you go above that threshold, you can get aid back for that amount of money. So we do that all the time.
You basically get your regular aid on a child, you get a public access cost aid, which gives you more money for a handicapped child. And then if you hit a high cost, you get additional aid on top of that.
I have a question. I don't know if it would have been answered next week, so stop me if it will. I want to talk about just some of the extracurricular activities and the expenses for that debate in particular. It's not a big line item, but I'm just curious. I know in the past we've talked about strengthening that program, maybe potentially getting in someone who oversees that, is more of a commitment to that program, it seems. Is it still a growing program in the high school?
It is.
It seems almost like an athletic sport in a way.
It is. And we have been having conversations with Chris Walsh and with parents, actually, and Tim is now helping Chris to look into what our options are regarding debate, because it's very difficult to find somebody to support that program.
Right.
Like a debate coach or...
We would love to go internal with a teacher to do it, but the time commitment is...
It's too, it's a lot of travel. It's travel.
Weekends, so it's dozens of weekends a year away. Most people just don't want to do it, so a lot of times it's a, someone that has a passion for it, someone that just loves it and that's what they love to do, or it's someone who's retired or just does this professionally for a living. Chris and I have been looking at ways that we could try to create a consortium around it, where multiple districts...
It seems like that would be...
We've been looking into that and we're talking to our current debate coach about that, and that could be a way we actually share expenses. At the same time, it's, we're looking into whether that's a conflict. So if you're the coach for multiple districts and then you're going to competitions where you're competing against...
Your children.
Against each other. So you're competing against yourself in a way. So that's the conflict that we're sort of stuck with.
It seems like a combined team for a sport, though, like a...
Well, you could do a combined team, but that's, we have a, we have a big enough team for ourselves, and I'm not sure many districts want to do a combined team. It would be like, can we have one coach do, say, three districts? But then you're competing against yourself because all these districts compete.
So as far as the budget is there, any wiggle room in that if we decide to, to do something to support it a little bit more with...
I heard Ira has time on his ass.
Send me an email.
I don't know if the budget is not enough or it's not, or if it's the system. Yes, I don't think it's the budget. We haven't had issues where we've run out of funds.
So there's, if I see this right, there's a 25% increase covering costs associated with Science Olympia Tournament Debate Team Advisors.
Right. That's mostly Science Olympia.
Okay.
And we've had to add advisors because of the, we have increased students participating in science.
Yeah, that's doing fantastic, right. Okay, I just...
Remarkable.
Okay. Any other questions or any comments? All right. Then I'm going to officially close budget hearing two. Thank you, well.
Thank you so much. And I'm so glad the snow waited until tomorrow so that we could do this tonight.
One hour later.
I'm getting texts saying, when are we going to make the call about the snow?
Not until tomorrow morning.
You get a half-day in tomorrow.
Jen, Ashley said you don't like the 125% chance of snow. I promised I would show it to you.
That's one bad teacher.
I know, who doesn't want to have an all-around vacation?
You never know. We wake up in the morning and they say the snow's not starting until Tuesday. That's why I'm waiting.
Good night, I say. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to continue on, we're going on to superintendent's report. We're continuing.
Then we would be in, oh. Oh, yeah. Mia.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Carousel.
Bosse Mean Girls.
What's your food?
I have tickets.
We're taking the girl's ticket.
All right, thank you, we're back.
Yes.
And we're going on to superintendent's report.
Right, and, you know, we're not having official reports tonight, but I just wanted to share, you know, the student highlights. First of all, I went to Oklahoma and as we talked about...
Oh, fantastic.
Oh, my gosh. It was, it was absolutely outstanding and had me captured. I also attended the winter sports banquet last night, which was so great. And I have to say, the boosters, Mrs. Zaccanino gave the speech last night that I, I said to her, if I could just take that speech and read it at graduation, it really embodied the heart of why people are doing what they're doing for kids. It was so wonderful and nice to see the kids getting awards, or even in some cases, their brother coming to take the award when they couldn't be there. I also attended the Coman Hill, Tim and I went to the Coman Hill Art Show, which really, when you go to the Coman Hill Art Show and you're looking at these second graders that are doing these, you know, cups and different ceramics, you're looking at these kindergarten students who are creating animals out of these cutouts, it's just outstanding.
Self-portraits are...
Oh, the self-portraits, yeah. Tim and I spent a long time looking at how hard it is to do a nose or lips at any age. So anyway, some good outstanding accomplishments. Also, I want you to know that Jeremy Ma scored in the top 1% of students nationwide on that AMC math exam.
Oh, my goodness.
And based on his performance, he's now eligible for and will take the AIM, which is the American Invitational Mathematics Exam, this Wednesday, March 21st.
Tomorrow.
So I don't know what's going on with the snow.
Where's the test being given?
Jeremy.
Tomorrow.
I hope it's on.
Where does he have to go for the test?
Yeah, so Lisa's...
I don't know.
So Lisa's been calling to try to advocate for letting him take it on Thursday, and they originally were saying no, they said they would call her back. But I think the rules say they have to take it at the specified time because they release the scores on Thursday and are not being flexible right now. So we're not sure.
Can he take it at home?
No.
It's online.
Does he need me to drive him tonight? Because we still have like three more hours.
He's here, because take it here. But they're, we're closed.
Right.
Somebody can get here.
It's incentive for...
Maybe we could get the town, you know, town DPD will take one of those trucks over with the test. It may be the only way. And also, authentic science research, I saw that crowd bus coming back on Saturday. Thirty of our seniors competed in the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair, and there were a ton of students who received recognition for best in category. There were some second place, third place, and fourth place positions, some for behavior sciences, neuroscience, it covers everything from mathematics to engineering and medicine and health. And the students who received the awards, Devin Wolfe, Alexis Aberman, Stella Lee, Zach Milwitz, Dylan Missoni, Brian Glatt, Arjun Goyal, Christina Barris, Julia Zabrowski, I do that every time to her name, Shre Selanki, and Rami Berenblum. So lots of awards to them, and then there were some special awards given out also. And just to close, that whether we have snow or not, I think we are clear Friday night for the Byron Hills Education Foundation Festival at Brayburn from 7:00 to 11:00 o'clock. I'm going to be there. And I can't thank the BHF enough for their support of these children and this district and the hard work that they're doing, very similar to this Board of Education, people who are just coming together to do the right thing for this community. So if you can come, there will be tickets at the door, and I would really love to see you support their efforts.
And even if you can't go, the auction is live.
Oh, yeah, the auction is live and it's outstanding. It's got to be the best one I've ever seen.
Really?
Yeah. So you can also get on the link and support the BHF that way.
You can bid online. I made a lot of Broadway shows, they're spores, they're bid before you go.
Congratulations. An eighth grade moving up tickets.
Yeah, an eighth grade moving up tickets.
I got to look at that.
Very good. So that's it for me. Great, another great week at Byron Hills. Okay, and Tim, that was your report, right? Oh, okay. Are any board reports, any committee reports?
Just a quick, Westchester Program School Board Association, there's a workshop on March 28th in the morning, which I have work conflicts, so I can't go, so hopefully others can go. Yeah, and it should be really good. They have a panel of school attorneys and they're going to touch on all kinds of topics, including implications of assault and negotiation issues and a lot of other issues that school districts have to deal with and boards have to deal with.
We're already signed up.
Excellent. It was very good last year, so hopefully it'll be good again this year.
Great. And you worked on it, you said?
No, I have a work conflict.
Oh, I thought you worked on it, okay.
Yeah.
We're represented there, thank you. Any other committee reports?
On the snowstorm, there I went to a New York State school board meeting, and they talked about transgender issues and they talked about freedom of speech. And three out of the 30 people showed up, I was one of them.
Amazing.
And Jen's been doing, I've been to two of her principals' coffees recently, and she's really touched the community with her security speeches, so thank you very much.
I think people really appreciate the sort of small intimate forum where they can ask questions. In their own schools.
Yeah. It's interesting, because the first meeting that we had, I collected index cards with questions and suggestions that people had, and follow-up principals' coffees were a way to share that information. I was, I was able to synthesize it in a way that I could share back information. But what we took from those suggestions from parents were outstanding. And I, I think for the first time, we're, as I said, it's eyes on the ground. I mean, these are parents who are driving to our schools every day, who are seeing us in operation. And some of the suggestions really propelled us with the lens that we have now for moving forward for safety and security. And one of my favorite parent suggestions was to include students at the high school level in conversations about safety, and those are more eyes on the ground that could really be valuable to us. And I think kids at that age are at an appropriate age to have conversations about keeping their school safe, so thank you to the public.
I think just hearing from, from you that I'm a mom and I get it and I understand your anxiety was so important for them to hear.
Right.
And to feel that you did read those cards and that you, that you listened, you know, I think that that was a huge win.
When our children are in danger, you want to talk and be heard. And I need to create venues for people to be able to do that. And, you know, I had a parent who can't make a working parent night, and she can't make any of these principals' coffees, and she was concerned and called me today. And we spoke for 15 or 20 minutes, and you just need to hear that sometimes. You're sending your kids to school here, you need to hear that we're trying to keep them safe.
Who would have thought you'd have to even talk about this stuff?
I know.
Really? Is there ever a safe place for a child? It was a school, at least a public school.
Well, I think the key is keep the, keep the eye on safety and keep the vigilance in the safety and make sure that you're maintaining the programs and the activities in the community. You know, it's that you can't be diverted to only one path. You really have to make sure that you're just broadening your base of what your focus is going to be for the district.
And then did you see Lisa Pellavino gave an amazing speech on the new math pathways program? And it really made it a lot more understandable to parents who are now going to be going